Council meeting back to order at 8:57. Item number two on the agenda, approval for town administrators to sign necessary paperwork for Smith Sisters Conservation Land Purchase. And there's nothing to show us what you're signing.
Because basically, well, there is, there should have been some material that was with that. There was a letter.
My section's blank.
But it was separate. I think it was in the mailbox today?
No, there was a, what you had that was given on December, it was the second. I don't know if, did everyone get it?
Oh, you want us to bring something in?
Yeah, what, the goal of this is that we are nearing the closing. They're hoping to have a closing on either the 17th or 18th of this month.
Yep, that's right.
For the acquisition of it. And there was a review by town council relative to the conservation easement deed and a question arose relative to the opportunity of the town in Newmarket to, at some point in the future, potentially drill a well there.
Right, right.
I had a conversation with Peter Garrett, Emery and Garrett, to inquire as to whether or not, in his opinion, the town would ever look at that location for a future well site. He indicated from going over his material that, as he put it, there was, is not a significant saturation thickness. In other words, the, the level of the granite, it, the surface is quite close. Whereas the wells, both the Sewell and the Bennett well, are probably almost 60 feet deep with, with soil, with the gravel material necessary to filtrate the water. And he also indicated that if we were going to drill a new well for additional water source, especially up on the plains, it would be northwest of the present Bennett well. So, given that, there's no, there's no issue that exists other than the fact that the town is purchasing both a surface and subsurface water quality protection for our wells that we have at, at both the Bennett and the Sewell well.
By purchasing this property?
Yep.
Okay.
So, therefore, I guess what I need is a motion by the council to move forward with the purchase and to instruct the town administrator to sign any documents relative to this action.
So moved.
Second. Wow, I didn't even have to ask my motion. Okay, any further discussion? The only question I have is how much, what was the acreage we were purchasing, so the public?
I believe it's approximately 115 acres. It'll be 115.67 acres. And it extends, it's both in Newmarket and in Durham.
And that is separate from the house and the five acres?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Council Plasky, your light side?
My light was on to make the motion.
Oh, okay. All right, I don't see any further discussion, or do I? Okay, roll call? I thought you were gonna hit your light.
Council Quox.
Aye.
Council Bergeron?
Aye.
Council LaBranche?
Aye.
Council Plasky?
Aye.
Council Minutelli?
Aye.
Chairman Glennin?
Aye.
Just as a sidebar on that, the council, we've, I haven't put on the agenda, which is gonna be on the, is that too late, January? Well, maybe we should do it in December workshop.
It'd be best to do it on the December workshop.
Yeah, discussion on the five acres of land and the house and the barn, if we did that site walk, what's the council's intentions on that? We'll get that on the agenda. Are you writing that down? For the agenda, I was gonna make sure it was gonna get on there, because I didn't do it last time. Okay, discussion of Bestway disposal contract extension. Mr. Wanoski and I have had some conversation on this. I find it to be quite intriguing. And before we get into that discussion, can someone please update the council and the public on the condition of the individual that was injured?
The individual that was injured is home. He's been home for, I guess about almost two and a half weeks now. The 23rd of last month, he was, he went home. He has a broken leg. He has a good sized bump on his head. They were concerned that he had a head injury, but that panned out that it was all set. That's part of the reason why they flew him down to Boston. The gentleman from Bestway said that he's doing fine and probably isn't gonna work on the back of a packer truck again.
And there's no liability to the town on that?
But.
Okay, Council?
This isn't related directly to what we're supposed to be talking about, but this morning on my way to work, I was traveling up 152, and there was a Bestway truck stopped in the roadway on the top of a hill where I had no sight to go around it. The driver was getting out into the road. The other gentleman was out and wandering around the right, the other side of the vehicle. Very, very unsafe condition. I don't know whether it was a breakdown or not, but I think it ought to be brought to Bestway's attention. And there obviously would have been no line of sight coming from the other direction as well, other than possibly seeing the truck at the top of the hill.
I'll bring it to their attention. I also, depending on how the council wants to proceed with this, I wanna request that in a new contract, if that's the way the council wishes to proceed, that we will write in what they have over in Stratum, which they can only work the right side of the road at a time. So if they have to go down and up the other side, that's gonna have, it's gonna, how it should be.
Don't do that now.
Because the individual.
They do on Bay Road.
Well, in, in some roads, they may do that. Yeah.
No, they don't.
Yeah, some roads, yeah, you're right.
And that's how the individual was injured, because what he did is he walked out from the back of the truck to go across the street, and that's when a car hit him.
Now, you and I talked about that, and you said it was Stratum. Does Stratum have it in an ordinance, or is it in there?
No, it's within, it's within the contract.
Contract.
When I was talking with the administrator, Paul DeShane, he indicated that there, there are several roads with it. They have specifically written in that it can, they can only work one side of the road at a time.
All right. You, the council's had a chance to read this. Would you sort of touch base on this, so the public has an understanding of what's going on?
Sure. The Bestway, we have a three-year contract with Bestway, and the term ends in December of '09. What they are looking to do is institute a, a new recycling program, which is beginning to, you know, practically every place, every town across the state is, is getting into it. It's called single stream recycling. At the present time, we're required to separate out newspaper or cardboard from the rest of recyclables in the blue bu, blue cans, which means that they have to have a special truck to come in in order to separate all their paper and cardboard from all the rest of the items, the cans and the glass and things like that. Under the single stream recycling, as it's called, all the residents in the town will be able to put all of their recyclable materials in one bin. You can even use a 30-gallon trash can if you produce that much, and we hope that you would. And all they would do is just dump it into the back of a packer. It is then brought over to Waste Management and a couple other places. It's unloaded, and they have individuals that separate all this material. It's a, it's a much more efficient way of doing business. They have less downtime on their, the equipment that they have specially purchased for, you know, the, the way we do business today. But more importantly, it's a way to get people to recycle more. If we recycle more, we're paying $7 less per ton that's being dumped into the, into the landfill over at Rochester, Turnkey. So it, it, and it makes it a lot more efficient. And if, and if we do move in this direction, then one of the things I wanna do is program on the asking administrators to talk about recycling, because we, if we do more, we say, everybody saves money. You save money on not having to buy a blue bag, and it means that we pay a lesser tipping fee to get rid of the recyclables. Under the contract that's being proposed here.
Correction, not a blue bag, a blue bin.
No, 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 I'm talking the bag that is, that you put your garbage in.
Ours is orange.
Ours is orange.
Well, you know something? When you're colorblind, it doesn't matter.
No, because I want, I just wanna make clear, because I asked that question, are we getting rid of the bags?
No.
And you said, no. The bags will still be there.
The bag will still be, all, all this is for is recyclables. It's just the recyclables that is a different way that we're gonna do business.
I don't wanna be behind you when you're at a stoplight.
I don't, I, I, you know, it depends on where it is, on that little thing that hangs down, tells me whether I stop or go.
Okay.
And if it's in the middle, I just keep going. Hope it's not a policeman in back of me. Under this contract, if, if we are agreeing to it, we would extend the contract for an additional three years beyond the term when it ends on October 9th. And that provides them the opportunity to buy the necessary packers, because it's a significant expenditure. It's about $270,000 to buy one of these packers. So that's why, because Newmarket, Newfields, and Stratum are all together, it, it's worthwhile for them to, to, you know, come together with them and, and work on this regard. One of the things that they are looking to do is to, at the current time, when, when diesel fuel exceeds $3 a gallon, we pay a surcharge. And they are willing to potentially increase that surcharge to $4 a gallon. So we, we, it'll, if it goes up to $3.99, we're not gonna pay. If it goes up to $4.10, we're gonna have the surcharge of 10 cents. So there's a benefit there, that would be to the town of Newmarket and the other communities.
I thought we were gonna try to get rid of that.
Well, and, and that's one of the things that we ask them to go back and look at that and see if it can't be removed for a period of time, if the communities are willing to go with their extension of the contract. Because there are other companies out there that have, you know, they've touched base with, with Stratum and said, you know, we'd really like your business. And so we, that was indicated to them, and, you know, can you sweeten the pot a little bit to make it better for the towns that are combined? They will keep the yearly increase tied to the CPI, so that continues to be a, a benefit to us. And, you know, in talking with Rick Malaski, because I asked him the question, what he thought about Bestway, he indicated that, you know, it, I guess they've worked out quite well in the town compared to the services the town has had in the past, so. What I'm looking for is, A, feedback from the council, and B, is the council willing to continue, to have myself continue to talk with both Newfields and Stratum on extending this contract and, and engaging in single stream recycling, which will begin probably sometime in, in the spring.
I see no light side. Council Plasky?
Mr. Wanoski, have you talked to Newfields and Stratum, see how they feel about this?
Yep, we had a discussion, and basically, we're sort of all in the, in agreement with this. Part of the discussion that we had was relative to revising the, the surcharge for diesel fuel, see if there was some way that we could do it, and if there are any other types of incentives that they could offer us in order to sort of keep us on the, on the contract for a longer period of time, so.
Thank you. Council Bergeron?
Right now, we have like a yearly cleanup for the people 60 and older, I believe?
60 or older, DPW picks it up.
I disable.
Would they be willing to do any, help us with that, so that everybody can get in on that, like it used to be? I don't know, the town.
I think we make money on that.
Do we? No, when I first moved to Newmarket, anybody could put anything out once a year, and DPW hauled it away. And then, I don't know, several years ago, you guys went to 60 and older. But could we, could we change that back to the way it was, where everybody can put things out? The curbside?
I'm not up here.
If you want.
Spring cleanup.
Spring cleanup, thank you.
I think, Mr. Bergeron, that was a high cost, just at like $40,000 or something.
Yeah.
We can't police it, there was too much outside trash showing up.
It was a huge expense.
A lot of people would, say someone lived on Bay Road, had a long drive, or they'd come home on the, next morning, they'd get up and there's three pickup loads at the end of their driveway, and I would go out there.
Well, the other problem was people were putting, now that I remember, people were putting things out months in advance and it was blowing around the town. That wasn't such a good idea, but.
But they, they do help us out with that now. I mean, they charge us a separate, we have a separate thing for that, but they do help us out.
See, I thought we made money. I'm sorry, Mr. Bergeron, you're up.
I am.
I thought we made money when we had it brought to the dump, and we separated the metal and all that, and we sold it off.
We do get some money for the, for the metal, yes. Whereas before, it all went into the package, yeah. We do make a little bit.
All right, Council LaBranche?
I appreciate the concept that's, that's been given to us. Anything that can help the environment and, and help lower our tipping fees is, is a good thing. The problem that I have, or the struggle that I have with this, is going with an additional three-year contract without going out to bid. It's a substantial amount of money. We've got one year left on this contract. I, I do recall when, the last time that we did this contract, there was someone that was potentially interested in bidding on it, but was not geared up at that time, ready to go. You know, I, I'm just concerned that, that we're gonna, we could get a better deal. Maybe we won't, but it's just, you know, to extend a contract without any kind of bid process is tough for me to, to take right now.
And that was one of the things that I looked at when we first, at the first meeting that we had, which was just Paul DeShane and Wes Moore from Newfields and myself, you know, I, I looked at it and said, well, this contract has a whole nother year on it. And they, you know, thought that it was coming up in December, we had to do something. And that's where we began to have a discussion, well, is there's the opportunity for us to get some, you know, changes to the contract that were more equitable to us and still provide them the same type of, of service that, or potentially an additional three years. All three of us have gone back, you know, to talk with the governing boards to see if there are other ideas, other things they wanted, or whether we wanted to potentially go off in a different direction.
Is, is, is there a committee for this? Or is it just a committee for the solid waste?
Just for the solid waste.
Solid waste, okay. Okay. Counselor Bergeron? Oh, actually, you've already spoken, so we'll let Council Quox and then we'll go.
Just, could, we get a list of materials accepted and not accepted down at the town dump? I mean, we get charged tonnage down, when they take them out from the town dump? The containers down at the town dump, when people come in and fill them up and they're hauled off, we get charged per container, we get charged by weight?
We do our own demo building construction. The stuff for Bestway is just recyclables and solid, refuge, MSW.
I would like to, if they wanna bring orange trash bags down, then they can.
Yeah, and that, and that, those dumpsters and all that stuff is free under this contract. They don't charge us monthly fees and stuff, they just come in and empty it.
So then, the other dumpsters you have with people taking other stuff, that's like the box spring mattresses?
Yeah, that's, we do that ourselves.
And, and how much do we pay a ton on that when we?
I believe it's $85.
$85 a ton?
Yep.
And are there restrictions down at the town dump regarding how much, what can be? I, I would just like a list of materials accepted, a list of materials not accepted, and the list of the fees.
It's all on, it's all on the website.
Guess what? I don't have a computer. You can pull that for me and stick it in my box, great. Thanks.
Is that posted down at the dump site?
Yep.
I thought it was, I thought I saw it.
It's, it may be right up here on the bulletin board and stuff, too, it should be.
Did you, you already spoke.
I've spoken.
All right, Mr. Bergeron?
Two things, one for Rick, actually, but I'll get the light one out of the way first. You know, most old dumps I've been to over the years have always had a little building where people can put, that's a swap shop, I guess, that's what we call it. They have a little building or shed where it may not quite be ready for the dumpster, so people put it in, and then people like it and take it home. Kinda saves us from having to pay the disposal fee. Have you ever considered that concept, just to maybe keep some of the stuff out of the dumpster?
We kinda do have that. It's, if you look up there to the side, you'll see stuff kinda accumulated along the fence, it's just not undercover.
So it's acceptable for people to take things, if they take a liking to them? One man's treasures and another man's treasures.
Oh, I thought you weren't allowed to take things from the dump.
That was my conception, too.
Well, if they throw it off to the side and say it's nice, and someone came in and said, hey, what's up with, with that little bicycle or something? He says, oh, that's someone borrowed it, and there's nothing wrong with it, and someone be like, oh, can I take it? And they'll take it, things like that. It doesn't, you know, very often.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the issue of going into, you know, a large dumpster and saying, hey, I can use this piece of pipe or stuff like that, it's not what we wanna do, but if, if somebody brings in a chest or something like that, rather than throwing it and destroying it, somebody else might be able to use it.
We just don't have a, like a, a sign up advertising it or a little building.
Paint me up, Frank.
But if you look to the right where the shed is, you'll see some stuff collected there from time to time.
Okay, I just thought maybe it would help a little bit.
Yeah.
Few items here and there. I have to agree with Council LaBranche that, you know, even most recently with, with the work done at the Leo Rand Rock Field B, we required an RFP, three, three bids, and I have to say the same thing for the Bestway disposal. I think in all fairness, we need to have bids on these things.
My, your side?
I went to a couple of the contract meetings with Administrator Dixon when this contract was set. Most of it was meetings with Newfields and Stratum, and the consensus of both Newfields and Stratum was that Bestway was providing the best service, and overall gave the best bang for the buck, to put it bluntly. The other major company just was way out of line, and they're already getting the tipping fees over in Rochester. The third smaller company, I, I think they were trying, but I think they were in over their heads, and I really don't think, it was my general feeling that they weren't really sure whether they were gonna go in this direction or not. I don't even know if they're still in existence as a waste pickup company. As far as going out for bid, we have, in the past, renewed contracts without going out to bid. When you've got something that works and works well and is cost effective, I think a renewal is what, the way we should be going with this, and renewal or extension of this contract. I think it's the way to go. Bestway has provided very good service to us at a reasonable cost. And when any individual in town, or the town itself, calls up Bestway and says, we have a problem here, Bestway's right on top of it and fixes that problem right away. There's not too many other companies that would do that. And I think, in the financial interest of this town, I think extending this contract would be one of the best things we could do as far as trash removal goes. Thank you.
Counselor Quox?
I agree, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Basically, I don't know if we would need an RFP if we're just extending an existing contract that's just two years into a three-year, and for the reasons that Council Plasky stated, I think we should stay with Bestway.
Counselor LaBranche?
I tend to disagree on, on the notion that, you know, you get what you pay for, and bottom line is, they're gonna be able to bid again. I'm not even sure what the actual dollar amount per year is, but I'm, I'm sure it's substantial for the removal with Bestway. And, you know, from, from a taxpayer's standpoint, as we've had discussions earlier this evening about trying to save the taxpayer, I would certainly not feel comfortable putting, you know, an automatic three-year extension on this, not without seeing what's out there available for us. If, if we wanna, if we wanna put out a bid right now and, and see what we can get, then that's one thing, but I'm just not comfortable extending, especially for three, if it was for one year, I might have a little different outlook on it, but three years, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't support that.
I'm gonna weigh in on this, because I see both sides here.
What's the timeline to you? When do they have to know?
That's the question, when do they have to know?
Well, you know, the thing is, is we still have one entire year. Our contract is not due to expire until December of next year. So if the town of Newmarket says, you know, we're not gonna, we're, we're not going to extend it for an additional three years, they may say to us, okay, we're gonna live with the contract that's there, and we'll go out for bid next year. I don't have that problem saying that to them. They'll negotiate whatever they, they can or want to with, with the other two communities, knowing that they're gonna stay with them for three years, but, you know, none of, none of us has made a guarantee that we are all going to extend, you know, the contract. Because whatever they, whatever we talk about on Wednesday, tomorrow, because we're meeting again tomorrow morning.
Who's we?
We're meeting with Bestway, both the Stratum and, and Wes Moore from Newfields, with Bestway to hear what they're willing to come back. I intend to bring that back to the council so we can discuss it.
Okay, what, what are you hearing from Stratum and Newfields? Are they inclined to extend the contract?
Other than, they're looking to, they're looking to see what kind of additional incentives they're willing to put on the table, that, you know, I mean, none of us have said, yeah, we're willing to do that. It's like, you know, okay, here's your, here's your first shot at us, we'd like you to consider, you know, sweetening the pot with, either eliminating or doing something better with the, the surcharge before the town's gonna get involved in it.
Yeah, I, I agree with Council LaBranche and those who feel that way, but I also agree with Council Plasky and those who feel that way, so I'm down the middle here. My reasons for that is they need to make a sizable investment. That's why they're doing it at this point, right? Is that correct? Okay. And the fact that we are in a consortium, so to speak, with both Newfields and Stratum, that reduces the cost. If Stratum and Newfields goes their direction, then we're out there, hung out there at a much higher cost, no matter if we wait for a new contract, that potential is there for a higher cost, whether we stay with Bestway or not, or we go with another company, because we are not part of that consortium anymore. Our costs could conceivably go up. So I understand where you're coming from, Council LaBranche, that, you know, we should go out to bid, but I think there's a point where sometime we have to look at it. Yes, and because there is a policy in place for purchasing, going out to bid, the council does have that authority to say, we can override that and go with this, because we feel it is in the best interest of the taxpayers by staying in a consortium versus going out on our own and looking at it in the sense that they're only going to raise the cost according to the CI, what is it?
CIP.
CIP, on a yearly basis, and not raise it for additional costs that they may incur, which would be labor costs, gas costs, you know, repair costs, all of those other costs. They're willing to hold the line to that one specific reason to why they're willing, you know, why they would increase that cost. And if they can negotiate to get rid of that surcharge, I think we're in a better situation for going into the next three-year contract. I mean, that's how I feel. I just want the councils to understand that because we do have that policy, we're not held stringent to that policy. The council can override that policy if it feels it's in the best interest of the, of the taxpayer. And, you know, that's all I wanted to say about it. And Counsel Plasky, and then Mr. Council Bergeron.
Mr. Wanoski, what would happen?
We need to vote.
If, with the current contract, if Newfields and Stratum went with this, and we decided, no, we'll just write out our current contract and then go out for RFP? Obviously, that's gonna put a glitch in the hole works with Bestway being able to buy the equipment for single stream recycling. Would, what would happen to our contract?
He doesn't know that.
Because we have, because they're extending the three-year contract that is with the three towns.
Correct. And, and I think that, go ahead.
Would that null and void our contract?
No. No, we, we have, the, the town of Newmarket signed a contract that says that it expires on December of 2009, and it, you know, I think you all have a copy of it, and it says, everything that's in that contract is the way it's gonna be. They might say, you know, if, assume Newfields and Stratum say, yeah, we're gonna go with them, they write a new contract, we're gonna live with, with what we have on ours, we may be doing single stream recycling, but they know that, you know, probably in July or something, we're gonna start putting out an RFP to go with somebody. It is not gonna, it's not gonna null and void our contract, it just means that we're not gonna be participating, but as I said earlier, there are.
I just wanna make sure our contract wasn't in conjunction with theirs.
Yeah, there are, there are companies out there that have, you know, Paul DeShane said, you know, there's the company that's doing Brentwood and Exeter and Lee and Lee. the company that's doing Brentwood and Exeter and Lee and a few other communities says, you know, we're kinda interested in, you know, doing a proposal to you guys. So that's why at, at the meeting that we had last week, we said, how sweet can you make this to want to induce us to stay with you for three years beyond the term?
Well, I, I still feel the benefits of extending this contract are to our advantage. Thank you.
Well, competition is good. And I think by, I don't think there's any harm in putting out an RFP for the, for the timeframe beyond the end of Best Way's contract and see what we get. Who knows? Maybe we'll be surprised. I don't see the harm in, in, in doing so at this time. We, we can choose Best Way if, if we feel that they're still a better company than the ones, you know, returning a bid, but it just gives us some options, at least see what prices are from other companies. We still can choose Best Way. I mean, I'm perfectly happy with their service too, but, you know, why not see what other people are willing to come forward with? Maybe Best Way will, will, will sweeten the pot, knowing there are other people bidding on the contract.
Plus it would be losing the consortium.
Well, you all set?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, what I just wanna add, um, I think I lost that train of thought, what I was gonna say here. Oh, okay, I got it. Would we be better off, rather than taking a motion and a vote on this this evening, to instruct the administrator to have that conversation tomorrow with the three, two other towns and with Best Way and then come back with what they're proposing? Cause there's no deadline to which we have to.
Right. That, that was my question. Is there a way we can continue these negotiations and to the extent that it's necessary? I mean, there is a fine line that we can walk in the middle here, you know, on these two perspectives, I think.
Rather than tie your hands at this point.
And I intend to go back and say, you know, the council is, is thinking about, you know, going out for bid because we don't think that, that this is sweet enough. You know, maybe, maybe saying to them, hey, what we'd like to do is, what, what kind of break you're gonna give us on the CPI? Cause if it's going up, you know, let's, let's freeze it at four percent, you know, something like that. They, they've gotta come back and with, with something meaningful and, and I intend to present that to the council before we make a final decision. But I will let them know that, that, you know, the council is split about, you know, wanting to go out to bid again.
You'd be doing that as a general, real general concern because you're hearing it tonight as opposed to, you know, they maybe say, well, or you might say, our taxpayers won't go for this. You're hearing it from the council, so you can actually bring that concern back to the council. Look, this is what my council's saying. I don't know. We need to wrap this up, folks, so.
I'm willing to.
I'm, no, I'm gonna call on you all. I'm just trying to figure who's next. Yeah. They're all lit up. It's a Christmas tree. Were you all set?
All set.
Okay. Uh, who's next? Counsel LeBranche, you're next.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have further information.
Second that motion.
Okay. And those who have their lights, oh, you have your light on. You are?
No, you had left it on.
All right. And I left it on. And Counsel?
No.
Yeah, go ahead. What was that?
We run off a fiscal year and everyone else in the, in the, the other two communities of calendar. And our contract expires in December. We should try to get that so it falls in July. So if you ever do change, if there's, for budget purposes, we have a handle. So if you just.
Very good point. Thank you.
More reason to move this.
Yeah.
Yes.
We wouldn't make that change now though, would we?
Well, no.
Cause we already have a contract, a new one.
If you're gonna renegotiate, maybe extend it six months to July, so then we fall, or, or they start the new one.
That, that's an option.
To try to make it so we're running with our fiscal year.
That makes sense.
And I can hear, I can, I can hear the other two. Well, now you're putting us in the position that, and it's like, yeah, but we're bigger.
Yeah, right. We have more clout. Okay. Counsel LeBranche, so you made the motion. Who seconded it?
I seconded it.
Who seconded it? Any?
Is there any way we can find out from other towns that you, someone that we might be sending an RFP to as to what they're getting charged? That's public knowledge. Their, their contract would be public, just to see what they've charged.
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah. But let's prime out this first before we start jumping to that conclusion. Motion on the floor? Motion on the floor. No, go ahead.
It's just one thing on top of that. They always base it on your tonnage, so you need to know their tonnages too.
Yes.
It's gonna affect the price. So when you, you don't just want the price, you want what their annual tonnage is. And that's how they always figure that number.
And, and the tipping fee doesn't come into play at all?
Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. Right now, we have a tipping fee plus a pickup fee. Sometimes it's all one number. But you need to know the two to, to come up with that number.
We have it as two separates.
That's correct.
Is it advantageous to us to try to get it as one and it would be at a lower price?
It's, no, because we go through with Lamprey Co-op, which has a very good tipping fee.
Yeah.
But you just, when you compare an apple, you want apples to apples, you need the tonnage along with the price.
Mr. Plosky, would you provide that information? I'm, I'm not saying like, oh, 25 towns. I was just, just the surrounding towns over here. Exeter, Lee, Durham? Okay. Roll call on the motion, which is to table this until we have further information, seconded by Counsel Plosky, and no further discussion. I see no lights. Roll call, please.
Counsel Quox?
Aye.
Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel LeBranche?
Aye.
Counsel Plosky?
Aye.
Counsel Minitelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Aye.
Chair McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Plosky, are you leaving? Cause we may have to have you stay until the end of the meeting. We may have questions. Just kidding. Uh, item number four, employee Christmas party. I initiated this conversation with Mr. Plosky. Last year, what we did, the council approved, the councils that were here last year, we had approved up to $2,500. And there was a meal provided to the town employees at the rec department. And I believe the senior citizens helped with that food. The food was catered by Penzamela, locally anyways. It was more than Penzamela, somebody else. So this year, Mr. Plosky had asked the staff through Kathy Castle to see what they wanted to do this year. And a lot of things came in, but the most common thing was they don't wanna party. What they would prefer to do is to have, um, something at each, at their own area, like DPW would have something. The town hall here would have something, rec department and the police department. And what they're looking at, um, is they would like to, because it's a Wednesday, the day before Christmas, they'd like to go home at noon time. And they don't really wanna take vacation time or earn time. And they would like to get paid for that. I mean, you're talking three hours, three and a half hours. Oh, actually, longer than that because they're open until 5:30.
For just some of us.
Yeah, some of them, yeah. Um, I talked with it, with Mr. Plosky and I talked to Kathy Castle. I think we're all kinda in that hallway talking about it. And, um, my thought was that we approved the same amount. They did not use the $2,500 last year. I think they used about 1,500 maybe, not even that. I don't even think it used all that. They did a Yankee swap last year. Yeah. So this year, what I was thinking of, and I ran it by Mr. Plosky and Kathy, and they thought it was a good idea that we provide food platters, um, I don't know, finger food, something like that, to each department, which would be four departments, I think, police, DPW, town hall, rec department, right? Yeah, four. So it'd be food brought in to each one of those locations, say 10:30 in the morning, 11 o'clock, allow them to go home. I'm suggesting that we don't take it from their vacation time and earn time. They no longer have a summer party where they used to have an outing. They don't have that anymore. I think it will show good employee, employer relations with the, um, with the town employees. We all know they work hard. We all work hard. I know when I was in the private sector, we were allowed to go home at noon time and we got paid for it. And it didn't come off our earned time or any of our paid time or anything like that. It was, it was sort of like a gift, a bonus, you know? But that's up to the council to decide. And what they wanna do with the $2,500, um, if we approve that, that's up to them. Because they're not gonna have one big party. So I'd like some input from the council on that. Counsel Quox?
Could we allocate, I mean, figure how much it would cost per person for a regular platter and depending on how many employees are in each department, allocate that certain dollar amount to that department person so they can purchase what they need?
Well, I, I, I guess I don't wanna, yeah, I, I don't wanna do micromanaging of what they're, what they're gonna get. I would leave that up to the administrator, leave that up to the staff to figure out. And I believe we had a staff meeting today. I don't know if the subject came up. But, um, I, I, I trust Mr. Plosky, and I'm not saying nobody else doesn't. I'm just saying, I trust him and the staff to utilize those monies appropriately. You know, um, in the past, we've seen, you know, dinners at $90 a person over the New England Center and, you know, stuff like that. That, that's not happening. $2,500 compared to what they used to spend, $9,000. I think it's reasonable. And again, like I said, they didn't use all of it last year. So that's, as you can tell, is what I'm promoting.
How many, and how many employees do we have?
We have 50.
50?
Yeah, around 50.
And just to, to answer you, one of the things that we will do is ask everybody what kind of platter you would like.
Right.
You know, how many people do, will be there and, and purchase those for that.
Yeah.
That sounds good. And I don't think anyone should work Christmas Eve.
I don't think so either. I have to deliver the mail though, folks, just to let you know. Mr. Bergeron?
No, just, I, I think we should treat them the same way I get treated. I get half a day off with pay. And I think the individual departments should plan their parties, cause they know what they want. And I certainly trust them to buy what they want, so I'm all for it.
Do you use that $2,500 in the manner that's appropriate? Mr. Plosky?
Another option that hasn't even been considered is the possibility of giving them turkeys.
Well, if we did that, probably just give them gifts and go get what they want, you know? At that point, that makes a lot more sense.
Rather than having parties with the economy the way it is and.
Well, I, I don't think the parties are gonna cost that much. A platter, you're probably, I'm thinking probably around 30, 40 dollars for a couple of platters at each place.
And this would, this, this party would happen after their workday, when they're still getting paid for their half a day off and they have the option of going or not going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, believe me, if we have the option of going home and getting paid, I'm going home. Right? While you would.
If you want to.
You would stay till 5 o'clock, I'm sure, the workers.
Done.
All right. How does the rest of the council feel about this? Do we have a motion on this? Do we allow this to happen? I.
What do you need the motion for to release the $2,500?
$2,500 expenditure for, uh.
For what? Use of holiday, you know, holiday.
Funds for holiday parties.
Don't say holiday cheer, because that could be a lot of things.
No.
Holiday festivities.
For you, town employees to use for their holiday parties.
Annual Christmas party. Oh, you made that motion?
I sure did.
Okay.
You wanted to add the half a day.
Yeah, the half a day with pay.
Include, to include a, a half a day with pay.
No further discussion? Vote?
Counsel Quox?
Aye.
Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel LeBranche?
Aye.
Counsel Plosky?
Aye.
Counsel Minitelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Aye.
Chair McGlinn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And happy holidays from all. Oh, I didn't know we even had a form here. Okay. All right, old business. This little branch has something on, on the old business.
Uh, just briefly, I, I hope all councils have a copy of, um, the mission statement that I'd like to see put in the C I P's document. I found out about this on Monday that basically it lists the goals of the council for the year and everything. And obviously, there were some things from last year that, that the council did accomplish and I removed those. And I guess basically, I'd just like to give, get the go-ahead from the council to take that document and tell Mr. Parnell, the finance director, that that's, that's part of the C I P. I mean, obviously, if there's any suggestions or changes, um, you know, I'd, I'd try and, try to just get this thing done in a certain timeframe so we can move on to the next cycle of the budget.
Okay. Counsel Bergeron?
Did you want anything more on that? Are you done?
I'm done. I mean.
No, I'm not your word now, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm just hoping that the council will.
The reading and you were talking and I, um, I just wanted to ask the town administrator, I know we had, uh, we had a request from the senior center for a tax relief for the $1,200, I think it was, or was it?
Yeah, that, that, I'm, I'm meeting with them next month.
Oh, okay.
I, I have a, a meeting with them.
I was just curious how you made out, cause we were talking about maybe using it as a potential meeting space and I just don't, I don't know if that had been discussed yet.
And that was one of the things that I discussed and they said, let's talk about that. We'll sit down January 3rd. And it's like, okay, that's fine.
Is that your next meeting with them?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm invited to their, to their, their monthly meeting and I, I don't know if I, I know the business meeting. I don't think they'll ask me to stay for dinner, but I don't know. I'm, I'm only kidding. But yeah, in January, we're gonna have that discussion.
Okay, thanks. I'm just.
Cause they have some reservations and, but they just wanna explore it.
Okay.
I didn't realize you were going into another subject. I, I still have a comment.
I don't know. I just wanted to make sure I didn't cut my off on that.
The only thing I would add, Counsel LeBranche, to, um, this here would be to go to number three, add a number three. And I noticed on the old one, they had the police department contract negotiating with the union. We would add, if it's okay, the DPW contract.
That is number three.
I don't have it on this one.
Three, conclude negotiations of public works wastewater water contract.
Add a number three.
No, no, I don't have number three on this one.
Really? Right down there.
We don't have it. It's not fair, folks.
Here it is, right there.
It's not ours.
See the one that has the number three beside it?
No, that's public works water contract. I'm talking about the union contract.
DPW, union.
Oh, union.
Union, I'm sorry.
Well, that, I guess that's what I meant. That, that's, in number three, that's what I meant.
Do you have number three there on yours? What number three is? I'm suggesting we add.
Just to add the word union.
Add the word union.
Yeah.
Oh, so you have number three, conclusion negotiation of public works wastewater treatment contract, union. Okay, okay.
Yeah, all we gotta do, all we need to do is add union if that's okay with the council.
Yes, that's fine. We can do that.
Because, I mean, hopefully I can ask Mr. Plosky to give this to Mr. Parnell tomorrow and then the document's done.
I, I was gonna workshop this, but I don't think it's necessary.
No. I mean, unless somebody's got questions with it.
Yeah, I don't, that was the only question I had. So do we have, let's do it in the motion. Send this over so we know it's done properly.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this document, mission statement as town policy goals and objectives as amended, item number three, adding the word union.
I'll second that.
No discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Quox?
Aye.
Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel LeBranche?
Aye.
Counsel Plosky?
Aye.
Counsel Minitelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Aye.
Chair McGlinn?
Aye. And I wanna thank Counsel LeBranche for doing the extra job of that.
Yes. I, I had some help. The administrator helped me along, cause I was like, what do I do now?
All right. Any other old business? We're moving on to new business. Town administrators report?
I don't have anything at this point.
The chairman?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Before we go, does anybody want anything added to the next agenda? I keep on meaning to ask that at the end of every meeting and I forget.
Yes.
What?
The limited parking on the Moraleys block.
Yes, please put that.
Moraleys spot.
I'm only meeting tomorrow at 6:30.
Yeah, 4:00, 6:00.
6:30.
6:30?
6:30.